I call the July 23, 2019, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And I'll ask my colleagues on council to stand as Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas Burke will lead us in our invocation. And then I will lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance if you'll stand at that time, please.
Thank you. Let us bow. All wise and mighty God, we thank you for this opportunity to come together again as citizens and council members here to do the business for the city of Portsmouth. Lord, we pray that this meeting will be conducted in your will, that we conduct the business that leads to go forth, for us to be educated, informed, to do the things that we need to advance our city. We thank you for the members here who are on council. We thank you for the members who are here in our citizens and those who are watching by camera tonight. These and all things we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is a roll call, and we'll do this electronically, to my colleagues on council. Please indicate your presence by hitting the yes button. And Madam Clerk, we have six present, one absent. Is that correct? Thank you. Our next is the consideration of minutes. We have the minutes of a call meeting of July 8, 2019. We have the minutes of a call meeting of July 9, 2019. And we have the minutes of a regular meeting of July 9, 2019. And we'll consider all three sets of minutes in one motion. Is there such a motion to approve?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded to approve all three sets of minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Tonight, we have special, we have three presentations. And the first is the Special Recognition of Foster Parents, a practice that we have started over the last six or seven months. Our goal is to recognize all of our foster parents in the city. And Dr. Patton?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council, I will call Ms. Pamela Littlehill forward for the presentation. I'm sorry, Mrs., Assistant Director, Mrs. Golden will be coming forward to make the presentation. Mrs. Golden.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. We have two families with us this afternoon, Ms. Arlene Carter and Ms. Ramona Jeanette. The first one we'll present is Ms. Arlene Carter.
Ms. Carter.
Ms. Arlene Carter has been a foster parent for 18 years. She has parented and provided respite for over 75 children during this time. Although Ms. Carter has never adopted any children, she has provided permanent foster care placement for two children until they age out of the program. She still keeps in contact with these children and many others who have passed through her home. Ms. Carter provides shelter, love, and support to many of the children she has serviced throughout the years, even after they left foster care. They are forever a part of her family. Ms. Carter was encouraged to become a foster parent by her friend, Jean Walker, who was a foster parent at the time. She felt Ms. Carter would be a wonderful candidate as she was already caring for children daily as a daycare provider. Ms. Carter also had a love for children and a passion to work with children and their families. For years, Ms. Carter has been a part of our CARES program, and CARES stands for Community Agency Resource Enhancement Services. It's a specialized program with Portsmouth Department of Social Services, and this program consists of foster parents who parent children with more challenging behaviors. In addition to supporting our children, Ms. Carter has supported other foster parents and participated in several trainings. She has been a great asset to our agency for many years. Ms. Carter also works for her church weekly with the Urban Initiative that feeds councils and helps children in the community. Ms. Arlene Carter.
Well, thank you. And on behalf of the city and all of its citizens, we thank you for the love that you show to our children. And we have a small token of our appreciation for what you do. But first, we'd like to give you the opportunity to say, speak to our audience.
Ooh, good evening, everyone. I would just like to say I have enjoyed the number of years that I've been working with Portsmouth Social Service. I enjoy working with kids. That's a passion of mine. I started babysitting at the age of 12, but I won't tell you my age now, but it's been 30-plus some years that I have been working with kids, and I enjoy every moment of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My thanks to all speakers.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Our next foster parent is Ms. Ramona Jeanette.
Ms. Jeanette, Ms. Ramona Jeanette has been a foster parent for 14 years. She has parented and provided respite for over 70 children during this time. Ms. Jeanette has adopted three children, Jamel, now aged 17, who she has with her this afternoon, Aldarian and Ozarian, both aged 11. They are two brothers of a triplet sibling group. The children have adjusted very well in Ms. Jeanette's home and in school. This past school year, Jamel did well academically. He received ribbons and pins for his participation in junior ROTC. He participated in the basketball program, and he was promoted to the 11th grade. Aldarian did well academically. He received Student of the Month, Most Improved Awards. He participated in both the football and the basketball program, and he was promoted to the 6th grade. Ozarian did excellent academically, as he achieved honor roll, achieved Student of the Month, reading awards. He also participated with the Lego Club in both the football and basketball program, and he was promoted to the 6th grade as well. Ms. Jeanette began fostering to adopt, to become a coworker with Ms. Iris Battle, who was a foster parent. She felt Ms. Jeanette would be a good fit for some children who needed a home. Ms. Jeanette had a passion for helping others, and she had a desire to offer children new experiences and opportunities they may not otherwise be afforded. For years, Ms. Jeanette has been a part of the CARES program as well. She has helped children with various difficult behaviors. She maintains a positive spirit, and with time, patience, love, skills, and abilities, she has facilitated many successes with the children she has serviced. Ms. Jeanette continues to be a lifelong connection for the children who have come through her home. Many are adults, and they still contact her for support and thank her repeatedly for the love and care she has given them. Thank you, Ms. Jeanette.
Thank you. If I did, if I did my math right, she's impacted the lives of over 73 children. Isn't that great? With love and motivation, motivation to excel. And on behalf of the Portsmouth community, thank you for what you do for our children. Would you make some comments, please?
Yes. I'm kind of nervous, but I want to thank everyone, even Portsmouth Social Service that have got me started. Ms. Iris Battle was one of my coworkers. Rest in peace. She had passed away years ago, and she had got me into it because she thought that I was being, how can I put it, able to take care of kids because she knew my background from when I was younger, because I always took care of kids when I was younger. And then when I got older, I started driving buses for Portsmouth School System, and most of them, when I was driving them, the kids would always come to me for advice. And right now, today, they still come to me, even though I don't work for Portsmouth anymore. And I really appreciate Portsmouth Social Service for giving me this honor tonight, and I would like to say thank everyone that have came out and thank, this is Jamel, my son. I adopted him. He was nine years, seven years old when he came into my home, and he have, he was behavior, but he have came a long ways compared when I first got him. He became a young man, and he's still working on being a young man, so hopefully, he's going to, I ain't going to say hopefully, he is going to attend college. Or the military, one of the two. So, I just appreciate, appreciate, and appreciate it. And I love doing what I'm doing, and I'm still affecting a lot of kids' life right now, today, in foster care and out of foster care. And I'm going to keep up the work until it say it's time for me to stop, but right now, I'm not going to stop.
Thank you.
She's a great mom.
This family here is proof that love is an action word. Don't you see it? God bless you all.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is to recognize the 2019 Neighborhood Incentive Grant Award recipients. Council expressed to the city manager that we would like to recognize those neighborhoods that receive, who applied for a grant, competed for a grant, and do it in a public way. And so, Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, I'm going to ask Mr. Doug Weller, who is our Grants Officer, to please come forward and introduce the neighborhoods who are the recipients of the 2019 Neighborhood Incentive Fund Award.
And if the neighborhood representative could come up?
I'm going to call them up one by one.
Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I'm Doug Weller, the city's chief grants officer. Tonight, I'm going to read a brief synopsis of the six Neighborhood Incentive Matching Grant awarding, award winners, and we'll recognize each of those civic leagues individually. The first one that we're going to have recognized is Craddock.
The members of Craddock.
And we have David Summers, the president, Ms. Laura Summers, his wife, Dottie Wyatt, the secretary, Jim Jacobs, the vice president, and Krista Black, the corresponding secretary. Craddock's project for FY 2019 was called Transition 2018, and they received a $5,000 grant award for continuation of their centennial efforts with neighborhood locations getting grounds and landscape architecture makeovers. The project funding received under the beautification category of the grant award, and they are a two-time recipient. Craddock Transition 2018 was the name of their project.
Thank you. Congratulations. Yes, why don't you stay, and we'll bring the next.
Historic Truxton Civic League. Wow. Okay. Historic Truxton was known for their project Neighborhood Centennial Beautification. They received a $5,000 grant award for Neighborhood Centennial Activity Locations Enhancement through landscape revitalization and signage. Their project funding was received under two categories of the grant program, beautification and special community initiative category. They also are a two-time recipient of this grant program. The next civic league is the Port Norfolk Civic League. The Port Norfolk project for 2019 was called Fountain Park Functional Enhancement. They received a $3,355 grant award to enhance the utility of Fountain Park via landscaping and mulching improvements. Their project funding received under the Neighborhood Improvement category, and they also are a two-time recipient. And tonight, we have, for Port Norfolk, we have Erica Nestler, the president, Paul McGrath, Wilson Ward Gosport Civic League. Representing Wilson Ward is Elvira Johnson, the president, Robert Williams, the vice president, Patience Yur Robinson, the treasurer, Joanne Gaskins, the assistant treasurer, James Overton, the chairman, and then Maurice Taylor, the civic league grant writer. Wilson Ward Gosport, their project was called Truxton Memorial Year Two. They received a $4,000 grant award for continuation of their memorial meditation garden transformation. The project was funded under the beautification category of the grant program. They also are a two-time recipient of this grant award.
Do you want to make two rows?
Representing Shay Terrace is Pat Pfeifer, the secretary of their board, representing the president. Shay Terrace's project was called Scotts Creek Park Illumination. They received a $5,000 grant award to illuminate Scotts Creek Park in an effort to beautify the area that acts as the gateway to downtown. Their project was funded under the beautification category of the grant, and they were a first-time award recipient. The last civic league is Old Town Civic League, along with Children's Harbor. The name of this project was called Operation Repair Fence. They received a $2,608 grant award for repair of the damaged toddler's playground fence. This project funding received under the Neighborhood Improvement category, and Children's Harbor, Old Town Civic League, is a two-time award recipient of this grant program. And that is our six award winners, representing those six individual civic leagues from fiscal year 2019, for the Neighborhood Incentive Matching Grant Award Program.
Thank you, sir. Let's give them all the grant recipients another hand. Thank you so much, and thank you for what you do for our community. Our next presentation is a presentation on proclamation for National Night Out. And if the police chief would come to the sergeant of arms desk. And Madam Clerk, would you read the proclamation, please?
Yes, sir. A proclamation, whereas the National Association, Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on August 6, 2019, entitled National Night Out. And whereas National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Portsmouth to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime and crime prevention efforts. And whereas the city of Portsmouth plays a vital role, assisted the police and sheriff's departments through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Portsmouth, and is supporting National Night Out 2019 locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens in Portsmouth be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in our neighborhoods. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now therefore I, John L. Rowe Jr., mayor of the city of Portsmouth, Virginia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 6, 2019, as 2019 National Night Out in Portsmouth, and I call upon all citizens of Portsmouth to join the police, the Portsmouth Police and Sheriff's Departments and the National Town Watch Association in supporting and participating in the effort. And whereas, and witness whereof, on behalf of the Portsmouth City Council, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Portsmouth, Virginia, to be affixed this sixth day of August 2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And this is the proclamation that you just read, and I'd like to just emphasize one more thing, that I urge everyone in the chamber, all the citizens in Portsmouth, to participate with our Portsmouth Police Department and our Portsmouth Sheriff's Department and our neighborhoods on this very important night out that emphasizes community and public safety.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. Hopefully, you will all come out to join us. We have 23 communities participating with National Night Out, and if anybody is interested in knowing when your closest National Night Out event is, please contact Ms. Letitia Branch Morgan at 393-8092, and we can connect you with your closest National Night Out event, and we'll see you all out there on Tuesday, August 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his/her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. The next item on our agenda, unfinished business, and it's the Consent Agenda. In the Consent Agenda, we have two items to consider. Because it is the Consent Agenda, we'll consider these with one motion. And would you read the caption of the first item, 19-252A, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. A resolution granting a use permit to Cable &amp; Kim LLC to construct and operate a coffee shop and restaurant with drive-through service at 5901 West High Street, tax parcel 0816-0030.
Thank you, ma'am. And would you read the caption of the second resolution?
Yes. A resolution granting a use permit to PER Properties, Inc., to operate a concrete processing facility, including the use of portable stone crushing equipment, and to deviate from the access and screening requirements for heavy industrial facilities in the Heavy Industrial Zoning District at 3999 Vineyard Road, formerly 3991 Elm Avenue.
Is there a motion, so that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda? We have a motion that's been duly made, and we do have one speaker that wants to speak, and that's Donna Si, and you want to speak on 19-252A. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 19-252A is a resolution for a use permit for a Starbucks coffee shop and restaurant at 5901 West High Street. The city assessor page still has an assessment of a service station valued at over $1 million. In 2017, this property was assessed at over $600,000. It is a half an acre. This property is set apart from the mini shopping center behind it. There's a metal separation between it and the restaurants and bars at 631 High Street West. If the property was opened up all around, I could see how this would work, but it is closed in. This is a heavy traffic corridor, and the way the land is isolated into a silo, I don't see this as feasible. I oppose this resolution.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on the motion, which is to adopt the Consent Agenda, which consists of two resolutions? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, with that action by council, we have adopted both resolutions. Is that correct? Okay. Which brings us to item 19-272, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. And would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting the next generation 911 EasyNet Migration Grant in the amount of $428,737.63 from the Virginia 911 Service Board and appropriated said sum in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Information Technology.
So that we can consider this matter as a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 19-273, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. Would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes. An ordinance accepting four-for-life program grant funds in the amount of $76,402.50 from the Virginia Department of Health, Office of Emergency Medical Services, and appropriated said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to 19-274, which is the consideration, the adoption of another ordinance. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance?
Yes. An ordinance to amend and reordain Chapter 2 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, as amended by amending Section 2-2A, Boards and Commissions, to confirm that members of Boards and Commissions must be physically present at a meeting in order to vote.
So that we can consider this matter as a motion to adopt?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to 19-275, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain resolution in And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that resolution, please?
Yes. A resolution dedicating all savings realized from the refinancing of the city's 2013 pension obligation bonds to the Portsmouth Supplemented Retirement System and the Portsmouth Fire and Police Retirement System for the sole purpose of enhancing the funding status of the systems.
So that we can consider this matter as a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. We're ready for discussion. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to item 19-276, which is the consideration of adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution endorsing the resolution of the Economic Development Authority authorizing and directing staff to market the former Victory Village site for development of an entertainment district to include casino gaming.
So that we can consider this matter as a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Counselman Glover?
Yes, Mayor. Members of council, on this particular resolution, I know during our discussion, I'm not sure we discussed this matter. So I would like to include to this motion a provision for an impact study on the surrounding
How do you oppose that? Counselman Glover?
How do I propose it?
Yeah.
Well, I'm making the proposal to council as a consideration for us as we go forward. I know we're beginning the process, and I know what the resolution does, but I just want to ensure that as we go forward in the marketing, we have that something in there.
Very good point. And so that, and I'm trying to get this straight, the nature would be adopt the motion and then direct the city manager to do the impact study?
Yes.
That's good. Okay. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, sir. I was going to make that suggestion because this resolution actually came from the Economic Development Authority.
Sure.
So we need to vote yes or no on this as it is, but I agree with Mr. Glover in your disposition of the matter.
Good. Any further discussion? All good points. Ready for, oh, we do have one speaker, and that's Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 19-276 is a resolution for the Economic Development Authority to market the former Victory Village at 3606 Victory Boulevard for development as an entertainment district that will include casino gaming. Tuesday, January 22, 2019, there was a public hearing on Resolution 19-26. The resolution was to contract a debt by over $5 million bond note. The city wanted to enter into a cooperation agreement with the EDA. The EDA would foot the loan, and the city would pay back the EDA. The cost of the debt ended up being $5,123,929.42. So where is the over $151,000 left over from the five, over $5 million bond note? The transaction between the Victory Crossing Developers, II LLC, Lucas Hospitality, and the EDA has drawn to a close on December 14, 2018. At last night's public work session for City Council, there was a presentation given by the Director of the Department of Economic Development about the Victory Village update at 3606 Victory Boulevard. The area identified is 48 acres acquired in 2008 and three additional acres acquired in March 2019. The memorandum of understanding with developer/operator is sealed. No one can know about the contents. The rezoning has been submitted and approved. I didn't see any announcement for that rezoning application. The Director also reported that a team of people met with the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee on Monday, July 22, 2019. This was not announced to the people either. I have a suggestion to make for the use of the 50 acres of land. We need to have an agricultural zone in Portsmouth to have land for the people to grow its own garden food and plant an orchard with fruit trees. We are labeled as a poverty city. We spent $175 on a poverty study with no solution presented. Look at the number of people in public housing. In fact, one public housing community is being demolished and rebuilt at taxpayers' expense. Why not get the youth off their cell phone, off their seats, and off their bottles, and start to physically work? We can refurbish the Virginia Sports Hall of Fame the city bought for $1.8 million on December 21, 2018, one week after getting a bond note for $275 million. We have a Virginia Tech Cooperative Extension Agent that can help create a garden and orchard to teach the young and old how to be self-sufficient without having to depend on other people and the federal, state, and local governments, like what is happening in Portsmouth now. I oppose this socialist mentality that is ruling Portsmouth today.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion on the motion, which is to adopt? The Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Lisa Lucas-Burk.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to also invite citizens out. While our colleagues have called for a study in the community, our J-LAR, Joint Legislative Audit Review Committee, will be here next Tuesday to give us an update on their studies found on casino gaming in our area. So next Tuesday at 10 o'clock, there'll be a public meeting in this chamber.
And that is our consultant. Any further discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the question? The motion to adopt? Please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Counselman Glover?
Yes, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that we ask the city manager to provide information to an impact study on what will happen with the neighborhoods.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Everybody understand the motion? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Which brings us to new business, and as a point of personal privilege, I'd like to recognize our state Senator Louise Lucas, and then our Clerk of the Court, Cynthia Morrison. I think I see you. It's tough to see people here. And then our school board member, Costello Williams. Did I miss any elected folks other than those?
Steve Herdick.
Steve Herdick. Yes, delegate Steve Herdick. Thank you all for coming. Sherf Moore, I can't see you in the back. Will you stand? Yeah. Now did I miss anybody? Thank you all for attending, and thank you especially for what you do for our city and for the Commonwealth. Your work is hard, and we greatly appreciate it. With that, we come to new business, item 19-277, Boards and Commission. At our last council meeting, we adopted a resolution that created a school formular study commission in which there is one appointment that we have to make of a citizen. And so tonight is the night that we should consider that. Is there a motion to appoint the citizen?
Yes, sir.
And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Yes, sir. I would like to nominate Gail Pittman to the, as the citizen representative for the School Funding Formula Advisory Committee.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been made and seconded that we appoint. Can you state the name again?
Gail Pittman.
Okay. As our citizens' representative on this committee. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. And just for the public's information, the school board will be making a similar appointment of a citizen of their choice. Which brings us to items submitted by council, item 19-278, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of items to bring to citizens' attention. The first one, which I've seen a lot of comments on social media about, is involving our new 311 non-emergency telephone number, and why would you call 311? So I'm going to read you a list of reasons why you would call 311 as opposed to 911, which we all know is for emergencies, police and fire, crimes, threat to property, threat to yourself, you know, major property damage, that sort of thing. 911, the 311 number operates from 8:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. It is a way of getting information either to or from the city without having to know which department to call. So you might call 311 about a pothole, an abandoned vehicle, a waste management concern, your trash wasn't picked up, a program or service brochure, a broken water pipe, illegal dumping, a dead animal in the street, inspections in building permits, fire safety inspections, a damaged hydrant, a parking meter issue, a stray animal, a street or a traffic sign that's missing, a traffic light malfunction, animal control, senior citizen information, a street light that's out, street cleaning, mosquito control, recycling, or zoning violations. And that's 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, 311. You don't need to know where to call in the city. They will dispatch your call from there. In order of events, we have a alphabet extended-day education and joining their team for before-and-after-school positions available for work. They will have a meet with the manager hiring event on July 30 and 31 from 10:30 a.m. until 2:30 p.m. at 1701 High Street. Our First Friday Concert Series is coming up on August 2 from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Portsmouth Cultural Arts Center at High and Court Street. And the entertainment on the First Friday in August will be Louis McGee. That same weekend, on Saturday, August 3, we'll be celebrating the Coast Guard's birthday. Remember, we're a Coast Guard city. And so the Fifth Annual Cutter 10K and Coast Guard 5K runs will take place from the Atlantic Union Pavilion right across the street. You can register for and save $4. City employees and families and members of all the Portsmouth family can run as part of a Team Portsmouth. You can contact 393-8641 for more information on joining the Portsmouth running team. That same weekend is the 33rd Annual Gospel Rama Concerts. That will be happening from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday, August 3 and 4. And that will be at High Street Landing this year. And then, don't forget, National Night Out is Tuesday, August 6, that we just heard about from the police chief. That's from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. in 23 locations around the city. And that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. The Chair recognizes Counselman Glover.
Thank you, Mayor. Words matter, especially when coming from elected officials. Last week, I had the privilege to attend the National Black Caucus Local Elected Leaders Conference in Jackson, Mississippi. NBC Leo is a constituency group under the umbrella of the National League of Cities. During the civil rights movement, Mississippi was termed by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. as a state sweltering with the heat of oppression and bigotry. Some of you in this chamber may remember this. Many assassinations and lynchings took place in Mississippi. When I arrived on Wednesday morning, last Wednesday morning, in Jackson, I decided to tour the city's Civil Rights Museum. During the tour, I came upon a wall full of mugshots of individuals, young and old, black and white, that participated in the Freedom Rides. These young and old, black and white citizens of our country were beaten and jailed for no other reason than exercising their right to assemble peaceably against injustices of the time. As I was walking away, a hand touched my shoulder. The man's name was Mr. Hezekiah Walker. Mr. Walker escorted me to his mugshot photo on the wall and shared with me his personal story. One of the chants from the hate mongers in the crowd was, is what he said, "Go back to where you came from. We do not want you here." The comments made by Councilman Bill Moody were heard in Jackson, Mississippi. The fact that he is tired of hearing the term "people of color" is most disturbing and irresponsible coming from an elected official that I am sure some people of color voted for. Mr. Moody owes all the citizens of Portsmouth an apology. The level of disrespect and divisiveness has reminded many of years past, and it is hurtful. We must unite as a community to condemn this action and work to improve the quality of life for all of our citizens, regardless of race, gender, or political affiliation. I am committed to making sure our collective focus is on supporting and improving our schools, creating economic development and business retention opportunities, in addition to supporting and promoting public safety, because safe cities are thriving cities. Words matter. One of our council's guiding principles is showing respect. We must never let our community and our citizens be divided by ignorance and hurtful language. We are better than this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, thank you. We conclude the items on our agenda, and we come to non-agenda speakers.